Folks, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting for Monday, December 9th, 2024. Let's see. Oh, Mr. Berman, will you call the role?
Commissioner Gonda.
President.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Here.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Here.
Commissioner Cavender. Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner McCollum.
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Here.
Commissioner Holmes.
Here. Chief?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless America.
All right, to finish my introduction, welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners. It is Monday, December 9th, 2024, a little after 7:00 p.m. We have a couple of exciting things to do tonight. And that first one is a proclamation for Haverford Middle School Football Team's I invite my colleague, Commissioner Forstie Grupp, to stand before us and to present the proclamation. And I'm counting on all of your undivided attention.
Whereas, the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners takes great pride in recognizing the outstanding achievements of our local youth, and whereas, the Haverford Middle School Football Team has achieved remarkable success, making history with their exceptional performance throughout the season, and whereas, for the first time, the Haverford Middle School Football History, this dedicated group of athletes achieved a perfect record of 7-0, and whereas, the Haverford Middle School Football Team became the 2024 undefeated champions of the Central League, and whereas, Anaf Omee set a school record of 11 touchdowns in a season, and Grady Shola set a school record of 54 tackles in a season.
Wow.
And whereas, the Haverford Middle School Football Team exemplifies the spirit of sportsmanship, dedication, and excellence, serving as role models for our community's youth, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford in Delaware County, Pennsylvania, that we extend our heartfelt congratulations and deepest admiration to the Haverford Middle School Football Coaches Kevin Shola, Jamar Cox, and Larry Armstrong.[202.01][202.01](APPLAUSE) Team Manager Connor Dietz.[210.01][210.01](APPLAUSE) Team Captains Ian Goldberg, Ben Madero, Grady Shola, and Joseph Pidgen.[221.26][221.26](APPLAUSE) And teammates Jack Wilson, Caleb Antonio, Finn Rogers, Ben Lane, Jamie Lee, Anaf Omee, Maximo DiVincenzo, Philip Moser, Jared Guess, Wyatt Wagner, Bryce Washington, Liam Baker, Seamus McGowan, Ace McLean Castro, Ervin Tay, Beau Fink, Liam Tickner, Ashton Smith, Anthony Morano, Griffin O'Donnell, Grady McDonald, Ty McDonough, Mike Malik, Nicholas Coogan, Gus Hamilton, Luke Wilson, Joe Cirillo, Brian Young, Colin Hunter, Patrick Doyle, Mason Snock, Brody McDonough, Jackson Abazir, Liam Hagland, Matt Diska, Charlie Morrison, Jules Monteleone, Tyler Ingles, Shane O'Brien, for their extraordinary achievements and for bringing pride and joy to our community, proclaimed this 9th day of December, 2024.
So why don't we ask everybody if... All right, team, if you want to kneel, some of you kneel in front and then the rest stand up behind.
We're making it real easy. All the seventh graders, seventh graders kneel. Let's do it that way.
They're not going to go.
Hey, don't get left out.
What do we say? On three, go forwards.
The person behind Ben Mandu.
All right, coach. So for all of you kids who want to stay and get your merit badge in government, let's hear it once more for the middle school forwards.[444.52][444.52](APPLAUSE)
Congratulations.
Graham, how are you?
Good.
Yeah. Sure you don't want to stay for the budget, Graham?
Me to do that other thing. Well, here I thought everybody was here for my last meeting as president, but I guess not. Congratulations again to this wonderful team and their coaches and staff. The next item on our agenda is not on our agenda. We had planned to have a presentation from CH Planning for the Safe Streets for All. I trust that we got out the news to everybody that that needed to be postponed. We are in the process of evaluating whether that will take place at the regularly scheduled January meeting or whether or not we will schedule a special meeting for that, considering the issues at stake and the amount of public input that we anticipate getting. So stay tuned and we will alert folks as to when the CH Planning Safe Streets for All presentation will be rescheduled. The next item is our citizens forum. 20 minutes, if people recall, for our registered speakers. Also 20 minutes for anyone who would like to speak on an agenda item. Be aware that tonight's agenda includes our 2025 preliminary budget. Tonight is the final budget. So that said, I do have a current list of registered speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Diskin, speaking on Safe Streets. I don't see Mr. Diskin. So also Breck Taylor, who was registered to speak on Safe Streets.
I don't know if they're definitely not coming, but there was email correspondence with them indicating that the presentation was being postponed until January, so they may have stepped aside. So we'll be sure to reach out to them whenever that date is established.
Excellent. And also Hong Zhu to speak on the budget. Yes, please. Come forward. Yes, so come up to the podium. Just tell us your name and generally where you are from. You don't have to give your specific address.
Yes.
And then the floor is yours for three minutes.
Okay. This is all right.
This is fine.
My name's Hong Zhu and a resident at 133 Moreland Avenue in Cooper Town area. We've been living at the same address for more than 32 years.
Mr. Zhu, is the green light on on your mic?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Green light's on.
And just speak, if you want to lift the mic a little bit.
Okay, all right. Can you hear me better?
Perfect, yes, much better. And that's for the viewing audience. We can hear you.
Okay, all right. Yeah, we've been here for 32 years in the same house, the same neighborhood. We like it. Okay. Now, actually, we appreciate everyone at the township working very so hard. Make our life wonderful. But having said that, we got our challenges, which is tax increase, right? I brought this issue to our commissioner last year. And it was that last year was one increase smaller. This year come a bigger. But this year, tax increase come in the bigger context. As a resident in the township, we actually hit this year, proposed, was a county tax, whopping 24% increase. And we were hit pretty hard by school tax this year already. And whopping, I think, I don't remember the exact number as a double digit, very significant. And as a resident, we don't differentiate township tax, school tax, or county tax. We just remember one thing, property tax. And the property tax increases more than significantly. And worse yet, the way goes, there's no end in sight. So first of all, I want to express my concern. The concern is actually tax increase, the way it goes, it will hurt everyone living here, including all of you, right? But most and foremost hurt is elderly and the poor. We're supposed to care of them. Okay? Keep that in mind, right? So I understand, compare all the possible increases, township increases small, but township is a part of the problem. The severe increase, living cost in the neighborhood, right? So move on to the second thing I want to say is actually now, I remember last year, I think we borrowed $20 million for the library project. Am I right? Okay, my question is, what's annual cost to service a debt like this year and the next year? Anybody can answer a question? For the $20 million, how much?
So we will answer your questions as best we can when you're done, Mr. Zhu.
Okay.
If you might. But I'll keep that in mind.
All right. I do, for everybody benefit, I do a simple calculation, okay? Assuming we borrow money, $20 million. The debt life is 20 years. Principal average, we pay $1 million a year, okay? Let's assume our herd very low interest rate we borrowed. Let's assume 2% a year, annual interest rate. 2%, 20 million. How much is that? 400,000. Right? I think this is very conservative, what I'm doing. Okay, if you actually debt life is longer, if interest rate is higher, this goes up. But this is translated into something, okay? By my rough calculation, $1.4 million a year for the library. Who benefits from that? Not everyone, not elderly, for sure, right? Not a lot of poor people, as I know, right? So last year, when this loan approved, I raised my objection to no bail. I wasn't got in, I didn't get involved in the beginning. I actually did write an email to my commissioner, raised my objection, right? Because I have my email. What I asked at the time is, this is 20 million. Who is going to pay for? How is it going to pay for? Specifically, what is the impact on property tax going forward? No answer. We need the answer today. Okay, one more, another thing related to it. I just got an email, there's a meeting today, so I pulled some information about the budget. So compare, I find the last year's approved the final budget and this year proposed the budget, looks like the proposed tax increase is around 1.1 million. Am I right? Am I right? I won't make sure. I mean, before I go forward, I'm way off, I want to be corrected.
And I'll correct you plenty when you're done, Mr. Zhu, but I do have to ask you to wrap up.
Okay. I think I'm right, but before I say I was told I'm wrong. Okay. So that's about like 3%, close to 4% increase, something around that, compared with the last year. Last year is approved budget, it's not actual spending. Okay, just bear in mind that. Okay? So if had we not borrowed that 20 million, there's no need, because we have, we don't have to pay that $1.4 million this year. So we don't, there's no need for that $1.1 million increase. It's very simple math, mathematics, right? So why I'm asking to consider that, because I want the increase of tax down the road. This year happened to be the case. We blame everything on inflation. We all live in the same world. Some people better off financially, some people worse off. Big reason is, some people good time, they save, right?
Mr. Zhu, I do need you to wrap up. I just need you to wrap up.
Okay, all right. So this is one last thing I want to say is...
That's the fourth last thing you've wanted to say to us, but go ahead.
The government does not actually grow forever, just like a person. If you grow, gain weight, you die early. Government, same way, right? We need get back to leaner situation. So we made a mistake last year, I think. This year, instead of asking punishing people, asking them to pay more to chip in, I think we should find a way to balance the budget, no tax increase. That's very important. We can, because we can. If anybody think I need help, I have experience cooperating budgeting, so I'm more than happy to find a way to help you, right? I have time. So contact me, let me know. And the last thing is, for anybody with managing responsibilities, there's a famous saying, if you're not a part of a solution, you're part of problems. We are faced with this huge tax burden problem. So far, Haverford Township is not a part of a solution. Let us all be part of a solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zhu. Thank you very much. Turns out I have one more speaker, Mr. Dignazio.
I'm going to speak at the end.
Well, that's okay. If you registered, you can get up and speak on any topic you'd like. I trust you're not selling those golf balls.
Hey, unless you're rolling a five, I have over 200 of them.
Suspect I know where they came from. I'm going to try it.
Sure.
I can't exactly enforce three minutes on you, Mr. Dignazio, in light of the last speaker, but I do ask you to be concise.
Sure, I will likely, I will be as concise as I may, as I can. Okay, thanks. So my name is Bob Dignazio. I live at 606 Country Club Lane. I spoke to the commissioners nearly three years ago, January 2022, about the ongoing dangerous conditions along my and my neighbor's property line that borders the ninth hole of Lanark Country Club. I have here more than 200 golf balls which have slammed into my property from the ninth hole over four years since the club's unregulated renovation project. These balls have nearly struck my small children, have broken a car windshield in my driveway, and I have examples, just want to pass that around, examples of damage, and have left countless debts on my home and cars. By any measurable standard, the ninth tee and fairway are dangerously close to the property line. I should add that there are also issues that neighbors continue to reiterate regarding the safety of the old rusty fence along the property line and the dangerous dead trees and pine needles along the property line as well with Lanark Country Club. In the new business portion of that meeting three years ago, Commissioner Forstie Grupp replied and thanked me for speaking, stating, "I would like us to look into it and see what possibilities there are because the damage is significant." Commissioner Forstie Grupp has indeed seen the damage on multiple homes, and I want to reiterate my thanks to Commissioner Forstie Grupp for her support. Thank you. After that meeting, Mr. Walco drafted a letter stating that the township has, and here's a copy of the letter. And if you'd like me to, if there are any points where you'd like me not to speak, I'm happy to move forward. Has no grounds or ability to protect residents along Country Club Lane citing three reasons which have since been found to be incorrect and some of them have been recent. For one, the letter states in part that Lanark Country Club is a continuing non-conforming use. However, last month, at the Township Planning Commission meeting, the club's attorney stated that the country club is actually a permitted use in an institutional district, not an existing non-conforming use. The members of the planning commission agreed. Indeed, country clubs have actually been a permitted use in Haverford Township since 1977, when ordinance 1689 was passed. Secondly, the solicitor stated in his letter that there were no applicable permits related to the, at that point, recent golf course renovation, which happened from 2019 to 2021 or 2022. But we've now learned that the club built new paved paths for golf carts, which are considered structures for the purposes of permitting according to section 703. They disturbed over an acre of land on the ninth tee area, which requires a state mandated NPDES permit. They removed trees during that major earth disturbance, which also require a tree removal permit, and they constructed a new bridge to connect the relocated ninth fairways with the newly widened, sorry, the new ninth tees with the newly widened ninth fairway. All of this was done on the ninth hole and required permitting, some mandated by the township and some mandated by the state. And these changes all affected where balls are hit from, the tees, as well as where they're hit towards, the fairway. And I have some examples of work, major work that was done. Take a look at that. When you consider that they also built two dining pavilions during this project, it's clear that it not only required zoning and state permits, but also a land development application. Unfortunately, no applications were made, and there was zero oversight from the township. Regarding land development, the solicitor also wrote in his letter that if land development were to be applied for today, the zoning code, I'm quoting, "The zoning code provisions related to screening buffering and safety requirements should be required as a condition of such land development." I came to the commissioners' meeting three years ago looking for a simple solution to this problem, and here we are, three years later and over 200 balls later. The good news is that the club is actually now applying for land development for the first time in 25 years. This may come across your desk in the near future, which is why I've come tonight, to point out that the zoning code and the SALDO, the subdivision and land development ordinance, excerpts which I passed out, both specifically state that the planning commission and the board of commissioners can require increased buffer plantings beyond the code minimums, which are for institutional districts 30 feet. So like a church needs a 30-foot buffer. I think we can all agree, a golf course may need more than 30 feet of buffering, more so than a church or a cemetery, which quote, "provide maximum protection" and to quote, "protect the general welfare of the public at any site." So one of the handful of ways you can solve this dangerous situation is by making a condition to the Lanark Country Club land development application that will probably come your way soon, that the club establishes safe buffer along the ninth fairway and property line, requiring a buffer of 135 feet between the property line and edge of the ninth fairway would likely move the fairway to a minimally safe area. In their proposed lane development, the club has already applied for a variance to reduce their buffer between the ninth hole and Westchester Pike, which is 150 feet from the ninth green, where they'll cut down trees and build a parking lot. So the buffer along the rest of the ninth hole, which is next to our homes, must be addressed by the township in the lane development review as was explicitly stated in Mr. Walco's letter about lane development relative to the ninth hole. A sufficient buffer along the fairway would actually angle balls away from the proposed non-conforming buffer along Pennsylvania Route 3, and I could explain that at another time. I have here, and I think I passed out in my packet on page two, there are few examples of ordinances from nearby municipalities which actually have buffer ordinances specific to golf courses. So I'm not just like pulling 135 feet out of the air, these are real examples from nearby municipalities. 135 feet, which I'm asking for, is actually less than what these townships require, which is 150 feet. The ninth fairway is currently just 45 feet from our properties. I don't think I included that. It's in one of the packets, but the fairway is just 45 feet, 15 yards, from families' backyards. Compare that to the fairway along township line, which is also in another packet, a page on a packet, which is 150 to 180 feet from the fairway edge to the property line, depending on where you measure. So a safe fairway along Township Line Road is about 175 feet from Township Line Road. The ninth fairway is 15 yards from my backyard. You see?
Mr. Dignazio, I will ask you to wrap up if I could.
Okay, I'll move forward.
We do have all your material. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I believe I included at the back of the packet, and I'll wrap up, a letter from a state legislator. It's not Representative Vitale, but it's actually State Representative Steve Friend, and it's not dated recently, but July 1990, stating the same, reiterating the same concerns from neighbors. So for 34 years, this has been an ongoing issue, which unfortunately, the township has not been able or willing to solve. And Commissioner Forstie Grupp, in her first meeting as township commissioner, displayed her courage and commitment to safety for residents. Three years later, the question is whether I think four more commissioners are willing to join Commissioner Forstie Grupp and publicly prioritize safety over what seems to be 30-plus years of, I hope not old Delco politics, but at least I hope we can find an easy solution, reasonable solution to this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dignazio. That concludes our registered speakers for the evening. Is there anybody who would like to speak on an agenda item? As always, I will start here on the left. Yes, Mr. Lee.
Hi, my name is Michael Lee. I'm a township, Haverford Township resident, and I'm here to talk about the Automatic License Plate Reader grant that we're offering tonight. And the first I heard about it was last Monday and the agenda for the working group meeting. And then I think tonight, we're going to vote on whether or not we're going to have, apply for the grant for this. And I have a lot of questions about how it works, and what I would really like is have a subject matter expert come and explain it to residents, because this is something that can impact all the people in Haverford Township. We're talking about 10 readers. We're talking about 10 readers that can read thousands of license plates per second at 10 different locations around the township. So that's a real ask for township residents as far as their data goes. So, and I don't know how this works. There's lots of questions around the country from where I've read about whether or not this data is stored in a database, how long it's stored for, so that type of thing. So if it's, you know, for a couple of, you know, if it's kept for a day or something, it doesn't matter. But some places it's kept for years. And I think only 18 states currently regulate ALPRs around the country. So this is a lot of information we're collecting possibly on residents. And that's why I like to have a subject matter resident, expert come in and explain it to us that we can ask questions to. So a lot of civil liberty groups are concerned about it being surveillance data. And then there's questions about errors with the data, false positives, people stopped who shouldn't have been stopped. I think the way it works is that, and again, it'd be nice to ask them and explain it to us. I think what happens is that there's a database of stolen cars and things like that. And then we read, and that's refreshed every two days or so. And then we read all our license plates against that. And the information that we're collecting, I think, is stuff like license plate number, date, time, location. It may have an image of a car. A lot of places do. Some places have images of the occupants. And again, I'd like to know what we're going to do here before we apply for a grant for it. You know, certain civil liberty groups are, I guess their legal forums are concerned about people being stopped who are innocent based on this technology. There's supposed to be really high error rate with these things. Octuple character recognition reading is difficult, and there's a lot of problems with it. So I just would like to have a public meeting before we actually vote on this, if that's possible.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Is there anybody else on the left-hand side? Yes, Ms. Dowdy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Dari Dowdy. I'm a resident of Haverford Township. I'd like to second what Mr. Lee has just said. I feel as though the board may be skipping a step in moving forward with the voting on this resolution 2421-2024, the automated license plate readers this evening. I'm sure these devices are beneficial, but they also have been deemed controversial as well. There are many questions I have, and I know others also have. I'd like to request the board hold some sort of informational session where we could have an understanding about how some of the questions that Mr. Lee had brought up too. I've read and researched the same, and I just would want to know that it's going to be used in such a way that's not going to end up being, you know, more invasive to personal and private information of individuals. And lastly, I know there's a grant for this, but not to sound, you know, but sometimes just because there's a grant for something, doesn't mean that the township residents actually need this. That's my question too. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else on the left-hand side of the room who would like to speak? Anybody here on the right-hand side of the room? That will end our Citizens Forum. I appreciate your questions and comments. We will, when we get to the annual, I'm sorry, when we get to the automatic license plate reader discussion, we will at least count on tonight's subject matter expert or chief to describe the anticipated use and hope that some questions are answered. And hopefully, some of my colleagues will also raise questions about it. I know I will. Thank you, Mr. Dignazio, about the very helpful visual aids in your conversation about what you're dealing with. It is something this board takes its duties on that issue and all issues very seriously. And thank you again for your emphatic advocacy on behalf of your neighbors. I was, there were questions about the annual debt service, Mr. Zhu. So the library was not all, the library renovation project was not completely funded with debt. It was also funded by some of the money made available under the, under ARPA. So I think approximately, and my finance director will correct me if I'm wrong, we financed about $15 million of the project?
Yes, that's pretty correct, yes.
Okay, so $15 million of the project. It's approximately, I think we borrow at about 3%. We did at the time. It may have even been less, may have been like 2.5%. And while we borrow, when we borrow money publicly, we issue bonds. And for a project like the library, we would issue the longest possible bonds, 30 years. We would use money that is, has shorter maturities to do projects that have a shorter asset life. So $15 million at 3% per year, well, 3% of $15 million is about $300,000 a year. Over 30 years, $300,000 times 30 would be about $9 million, since you'd be basically declining that in half at the end of it. You'd cut that in half to about $4.5 million. So you'd add $4.5 million to $15 million, would get you $19.5 million, which we'd be borrowing for approximately 30. I said it was about, I think it's about 3, I was guessing 3% at this point. It might actually be less. So I, Mr. Zhu, I gave you a lot of time to speak. It's, this is now where we respond. So afterwards, you certainly come up. I'll give you all the time in the world and we could talk about this. But in terms of your questions that you asked, I'm trying to answer them for the public. I appreciate that. My numbers do add up. But my point that I'm getting at is it's, it's less than $1 million of debt service a year for us for the, for the library work. And that is a policy decision that we as a board made, that improving our library, which I think is, which we all think is good for the entire township, no matter where in economic strata our residents may reside, we think that a strong public library is something that's extremely valuable and is useful for everybody in the township and benefits everybody in the township. So that is one of the things that, you know, could be calculated into our total expenses for the year and our total costs. I agree with you. The government does not need to just grow and grow and grow. But at the same time, our salaries grow, not our salaries, but salaries of our staff have to grow. The cost of our benefits that we provide to our workers go up over time. And that goes into our calculation each year as to how we arrive at our budget. So I do appreciate your points. And it is unfortunate that this year's budget increase comes at a time when folks are anticipating and have been made aware of a difficult county budget increase and the annual increases that the school district has to impose as well. But I can assure you that our staff take this very seriously, and none of us lightly raised anybody's, including our own taxes in the township. But I appreciate your analysis. And as I said, I'm happy to speak with you, or any of us are happy to speak with you afterwards. So thank you for your comments. You cannot. You can later, after the meeting. Happy to speak. Mr. Zhu, please. Mr. Zhu, you're a registered speaker. You got to speak. We are answering it. And then I'm, any one of us would be happy to speak with you after the meeting. But this is not a back and forth. This is our meeting. We have to conduct our official meeting. Mr. Zhu?
At the end of the meeting, you're allowed to speak.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. You can, yeah, my apologies. You can get up again in the, in the public forum afterwards for non-agenda items. So thank you. Thank you for that, Mr. Quinn. I believe that, oh, covers everything that was spoken about today. Next item on our agenda is our budget hearing. Mr. McCloskey.
Yes, just to follow Mr. Holmes on some of the things that you spoke about. You know, as we discussed last month, and as you just indicated, all of us are approaching this trying to think both practically for the township for the future and to also be very considerate of any burden that any tax increase would place on the residents. And I assure you that each one of us, and certainly the township manager and Ms. Cuthbertson, our assistant township manager, went through the budget with a fine-tooth comb. And everything was well thought out, taken into consideration. Just to reiterate some of the numbers, Mr. Holmes, that you made reference to. You know, a large portion of our budget is not the big projects or the purchases, the trucks. 68% of our annual budget is for personnel costs. That means for the people that work here at the township. That means for the people that work at the public works. That means for our police officers. It means for the people that's working at the SCADIM. That's 68% of our budget. And those wage increases for our civilian staff this coming year are 3.5%. For our police, it's 4.2%. And our health care consortium rates were increased 6.5%. So taking all that into account, and that's 68% of our budget, we're trying to make the best decisions we can by also valuing all the people who put in hard work every day for every resident in this township, people who come to work, whether it's raining, snowing, you know, when there's accidents at the corner of Eagle and Darby, and then somebody runs into, and somebody needs to direct that traffic. Those people are everyday people, just like all of us, who, you know, we agree that deserve an increase in wages, and they deserve to have quality health care. And we take that into account in our budget. And we're trying to do the best we can. And I fully understand calls and emails that I've gotten, certainly, with regard to increases at the county and the school district. But what we're voting on tonight is our budget. And I think our budget is publicly available. And if you take a look at our budget, our budget took into account everything we possibly could while providing services to our residents for 2025, while respecting our, the people that work for the township. And it was, it's a benefit to the residents. And it's a benefit. It also indicates to all of you that we're not pushing the can down the road and just going to leave it for another board to deal with. We're trying to make difficult decisions that are responsible, both fiscally and for all of you. With that being said, since our last meeting, the proposed increase was 3.94%. Currently, having taken in some additional numbers in terms of projected revenues and other expenditures, it is now, the proposed budget for tonight will be just 3.4%. There is, for all the commissioners, there's specific references. If there's any questions from Ms. Cuthbertson or Mr. Berman or myself, on page 18 of the packet you were provided. But to go over some of, some of them, you know, essentially, some of the revenues that we talked about in terms of what we predicted since September came in a little bit higher, and that was able, you know, we certainly turned that back into savings for the residents. We're using an increase of $281,000 for the SCADIM project coming out of the ARPA funds. So now, instead of $600,000, it's going to be $881,000. And that's to make sure that we use all of that money that is required to be allocated by the end of this calendar year. And there, as I said, if anybody has specific questions on any of those changes. But overall, it is a reduction from last month from 3.94 to a 3.4% increase in the tax revenue.
Thank you, Commissioner McCloskey.
Do I need to make a motion first?
So you first want to, yes, introduce the motion and then point if you want to describe any changes or ask Ms. Cuthbertson?
Motion to adopt the 2025 final budget.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. It's time for discussion on this topic. Mr. McCloskey, do you want to provide any more details or ask Ms. Cuthbertson?
I mean, as I said, some of the changes in expenditures were, you know, a decrease in what we estimated to be the insurance premiums of $83,000, a decrease in the fund balance transfer from the Capital Projects Funds for the SCADIM project, $400,000, a decrease in HR computers technology, a decrease in Act 511 Collection Commission due to decreased revenues, increase in defined benefit pension contribution, and equipment purchase carryover from 2023 and '24. That's essentially sanitation trucks that were already agreed to be purchased that are now being pushed to 2025. And then there's a change in the revenues, decrease in property tax revenue, decrease in fund balance reserves that went to the SCADIM locker room funding project, the use of reserves generated in 2024 to the sanitation trucks deliveries that are scheduled now in 2025. Again, some additional money being spent from ARPA to go to some of our projects scheduled for 2025. Overall, as I said, that changes the total revenues to five, or total, yeah, it changes, that's just for the sewer. It changes the total revenues to $54,813,192, and total expenditures is the same for a balanced budget of $54,813,192. The percentage increase goes from 3.94 to 3.4.
Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments about the revised budget?
Bigger, the average cost to a homeowner, the increase?
Be $52 a year, the average homeowner, and forty...
An average or median, do you know?
Median would be 46.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions or comments?
So again, just to reiterate to my colleagues and to the public, you know, great care was taken to look at this budget and do everything possible to both be responsible for our expenses, but also be considerate of what an increase would be. And I think, obviously, we can all, we're all going to vote on it, but an appreciation certainly is owed to Mr. Berman and Ms. Cuthbertson for all the work they did, and for all the department heads who worked with them in order to, you know, still provide services that everybody has come to expect from this township, while doing it in a fiscally responsible manner.
No, you can after the meeting, or you can later in the meeting when we go over this. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondik.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Let me thank our township staff and Commissioner McCloskey and our Finance Committee for their excellent work on this budget. Thank you all for another, another very good job. Next item for our consideration is the ordinance, ordinance P-15.
So a motion to adopt second reading of ordinance P-15, 2024, authorizing the imposition of an annual store rental or charge of $5.15 per 1,000-gallon water consumed.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any questions or comments on this? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondik.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next ordinance for our consideration, P-16 of 2024.
Motion to adopt second reading ordinance P-16, 2024, authorizing the imposition of an annual residential trash fee of $283.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondik.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Ordinance 3009 of 2024, this is the 2025 tax levy.
Motion to adopt the final reading of ordinance 3009, 2024, establishing the property tax rate for 2025 at 4.545 mils.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondik.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. And finally, for our consideration, ordinance 3010 of 2024, the budget appropriation.
Motion to adopt the final reading of ordinance 3010-2024, appropriating funds for the 2025 operational government.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondik.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Okay, that completes the budget hearing section of our meeting today. We now move on to the Bureau of Fire update. Mr. Gondik.
Thank you. The Haverford Township Bureau of Fire report for November of 2024 indicates that we had total incidents of 71, 62 were township incidents, and nine were out-of-t township mutual aid incidents. The average personnel per call were 20. We had 1,180 personnel hours committed to incidents, and an additional 569 personnel hours committed to training. The Bureau of Fire provided mutual aid to four working fires within Delaware County in November.
Thank you for that report. Any questions or comments on Commissioner Gondik's report? Hearing none. I now invite our Township Auditor update. Mr. Anderson. Welcome back.
Thank you. First, I want to say congratulations to the Haverford Middle School team. It's great season. I also want to say I have a lot of sympathy for the guy whose house keeps getting hit by balls, but he's just lucky he didn't land a member, because then he'd be getting hit by 400 balls a year, at least. I have a wicked slice.
I'm sure he takes great comfort in that.
Yes, definitely. However, I do...
As does everybody who lives on Country Club Lane.
He's glad he does not live in Upper Darby, because I do terrorize them at McCall Golf Club. But anyways, I reviewed the budget, and I found everything looked reasonable. I had no questions. I also reviewed the warrants and expenditures for this meeting. I found no irregularities, and my questions were answered to my satisfaction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Berman, time for the Township Manager update.
Thank you. I will just wish everyone peace and happiness for the rest of the holiday season. There are a lot of people here who work for the township, a couple hundred employees. We appreciate the board's faith that you've put in us, and we appreciate the faith of the residents, and all of us enjoy serving you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. Next thing on our agenda is the approval of minutes. Motion, so we'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt the meeting minutes of November 12th, or 2024, and the preliminary budget meeting of November 18th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments, additions, deletions on either set of minutes? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondik.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next item on our agenda is the approval of warrants.
Motion to approve the following warrant, number 12, 2024, totaling $9,330,320.30. General and sewer fund payroll warrant for November 27, 2024, in the amount of $829,323.23. General and sewer fund payroll warrant, December 5, 2024, in the amount of $1,182,238.23. General fund disbursements in the amount of $2,944,198.60. Sewer fund disbursements in the amount of $505,159.86. Community development block grant fund disbursement in the amount of $104,880.40. Capital Projects Fund disbursement in the amount of $649,909.20. American Rescue Plan Fund disbursement in the amount of $2,171,950.68. Debt service, Series 2021, general obligation bonds, $364,873.35. Debt service, Series 2020, general obligation bonds, $81,871.25. Debt service, Series 2018, general obligation bonds, $483,598.75. Credit card statement ending November 27, 2024, in the amount of $12,636.71.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And any questions or comments on these warrants? We understand from our Township Auditor that he reviewed them, and any questions were answered to his satisfaction. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondik.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. We are now moving into the portion of the agenda to deal with ordinances. We have three ordinances for consideration tonight. Excuse me. First ordinance, P-8 of 2024, Stormwater Management.
Mr. President.
Yes, Commissioner Trombetta.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P-8, 2024, amending Chapter 78, Erosion and Sediment Control, Stormwater Management.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this? Obviously, this has been the, on the subject of significant talks for the last couple of months. So hearing nothing, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondik.
No.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
No.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
No. Ordinance passes.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you all involved in significant ordinance and work for stormwater management. Our next ordinance for our consideration is P-14 of 2024.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P-14, 2024, establishing parking time limited zones at Polo Field, 109 County Line Road, and establishing special purpose parking zones in front of 65 Rodmore Road.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. It's an ordinance, it's our second reading. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondik.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. And finally, ordinance P-17 of 2024.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P-17, 2024, amending Chapter 182 zoning, Section 182, 106B, to provide for new definitions related to building structures and lots, Section 182, 711, related to accessory building and accessory structure regulations, and Section 182, 802, related to non-conforming uses buildings and structures.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this? We did hold a public hearing on this earlier tonight, as required by the law. There was, there were issues raised in that hearing about, I want to make sure I use the nomenclature right, habitable accessory uses?
Accessory dwelling uses.
Accessory dwelling uses, ADUs, is that what people refer?
Correct.
And as I understand from testimony in that public hearing, ADUs, accessory dwelling units are not currently allowed under our code. These changes do not address it one way or another. We heard testimony earlier today about the value of accessory dwelling uses and, or is it uses or units?
Units.
Units, accessory dwelling units. I think that is a conversation we as a board should have, but I don't think it's a conversation we need to have this evening, unless anybody feels strongly to the contrary. So unless there are any other comments or questions, I would, I would ask Mr. Berman to call the roll.
Commissioner Gondik.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. We now move to resolutions. We have one, two, three. We have a dozen resolutions for our consideration tonight. The first such resolution, 2418, involves the Quadrangle Art Studio Edition Land Development Plan. I will entertain a motion and then invite representatives of the Quadrangle to come before us and discuss the Art Studio Edition Land Development Plan. So I need a motion.
Mr. President.
Yes, Commissioner Trombetta.
Got to pick one.
Yeah, indeed.
Thank you.
Not picking favorites, I promise.
It's okay.
As you know.
Yeah. Motion to adopt Resolution Number 2418 to 2024, granting preliminary slash final land development plan approval for a building addition to Art Studio Building at the Quadrangle, 3300 Darby Road, Haverford.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have with us someone who is not a stranger to this board, George Brosman, as representing the Quadrangle, has represented other parties before us in the past. Mr. Brosman, if you would, the floor is yours to describe to us the Quadrangle's position on the current preliminary and final land development plan.
Thank you. Good evening, George Brosman, representing the Quadrangle. I'm here with some representatives of the ownership and management of that fine community, and we have our architect, our landscape architect, and our civil engineer. When we were here before you in November, we focused on the issue of sidewalks. I told you last week at the workshop, I filled you in on what had happened since then. In a nutshell, we had gone back to the Planning Commission of Haverford Township. After we saw you in November, we got a recommendation of approval for the sidewalk and curb waiver. They had already recommended approval of the project. We proposed to the Planning Commission adding a relatively small path segment to connect to an existing sidewalk at the corner of Darby Road and Parkview. The Planning Commission had also asked an exploration be made for a similar segment at College Avenue, and we described to you last week why we thought that wasn't a good idea. We have a resolution that we've worked out with Mr. Walco and the staff. We came up with a condition of approval that we proposed that would provide for that path connection to be installed, and we do have a slide presentation we could make. I know last week, there was some interested in seeing that, but there wasn't a computer here. So if the board wishes, we can run through that. If not, I wanted to say that, you know, as things are written currently, it's acceptable to the Quadrangle, the resolution that you have before you.
Before things were, before the discussion was postponed a month ago, we did spend some time looking at this. Does the board feel the need to see slides this evening?
It doesn't look like it would take too much time. Okay, sure. I'm going to ask Mimi Winkler, who is the architect. She's put these slides together, so if you could go through it. Thanks, Mimi.
Yes, my name is Mimi Winkler with Converse Winkler Architecture, and we've been representing the Quadrangle. Some of these slides are similar to ones you may have seen before. The first slide shows, shows, oh dear, shows the obstacles along Darby Road that makes it difficult to put a sidewalk out there. There's a lot of underground infrastructure, there are telephone poles, there are traffic signals, there are steep slopes, and a historic wall. There was talk that we should put a path on the interior of the community, because it didn't work very well on the outside. But as you can see, again, it's very, the grade goes up here, and it's very much a wooded, buffered area, so that makes it difficult. We looked at that again. It, you know, the slides, the first slide, in the beginning, it's not too steep, but then as you go down the walkway, down the driveway, you see that it becomes quite steep there, and very wooded, and is, would be disruptive to get any path through there. The Planning Commission had asked us to look at making a connection at College Avenue as well as Parkview, so we looked at that. And this shows the community loop road, and where College Avenue comes in, and a section through there. Again, there is a lot of infrastructure, traffic signals, telephone poles, underground items, and as you can see, the best informal measurement we got of the, you know, the grade goes up quite a bit there with a lot of trees and wooded area. This is also, there are no sidewalks on any of the other sides, and there's no pedestrian crossing signs on all of the intersections, as well as infrastructure on the other side, so we feel that in itself would also be a hazard to encourage anybody to go out there. Here is a picture from that loop road, looking directly, College Avenue is right back there, so you can see the rise in grade and the amount of trees there. And again, looking from the other direction, where the grade goes up, and the infrastructure that's very close to Darby Road. We did feel that it would be possible to put a connection here on the Parkview Drive, which is an intersection that has four curb cuts on all sides, as well as a connecting path down through the Haverford Reserve and into the Township Park. So these are the existing curb cuts that are in there now, and we're proposing that we put a pathway through connecting to this existing curb cut that would allow people to walk through here and connect on and down to this existing pathway. There are a lot of mature trees right on that corner, except we discovered there is an opening sort of right near where we would propose this connection to make, and this shows the opposite side where you would go across. This is where we propose to make the connection. You can see there's a slight slope down. This is looking from the driveway up towards where that connection is, and again, we just really have to take out one smaller shrub, the larger trees are to the side, so it works fairly well from that perspective. It does eliminate one parking space, but most of these parking spaces are really used as overflow, because there's a large renovation going on inside now. This is where a lot of the furnishings and things have been stored, so... So we feel we can do that. I think that is the end.
Any questions or comments from our colleagues? George, anything else you want to, I'm sorry, Mr. Brosman, anything else you want to add?
No, we're happy to answer any other questions you have. We appreciate the township and the township staff working with us on this, and we hope that it could be approved as your resolution is worded. Thank you.
And Mr. Brosman, as I understand the resolution as worded, there are a number of waivers that the, that the applicant is seeking, including a waiver about the sidewalks. That waiver is a partial waiver that satisfies the conditions that we just talked about in terms of this.
That's correct. It's written as a partial waiver, and we worked with Ms. Gilousian and Mr. Walco on wording of a condition that appears in your resolution to the condition for granting that partial waiver, basically around building that path segment and securing its completion.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank your presentation, thank you. Any questions or comments?
I think it's a good step in improving, it's a small step, but improves access to our parks, and appreciate your work in this. I think, long term, we would love to be able to maybe at some point work with the Quadrangle to see if, I mean, our aim is to make the park more accessible all along Darby Road if some, you know, this is a longer term project, but some type of side path, perhaps a easement, we could work out with the, with the Quadrangle. But for this purposes, this is great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I would like to thank you, members of the Quadrangle, for taking all the time that you have to meet, not, not just with us and the Planning Commission, but also the Historical Commission, to work out all the details for this lovely addition that I think will serve your residents beautifully for years, but thank you for coming to all the meetings and being so responsive to our concerns and questions. It means a great deal, so thanks.
Here, here. Anything else? So, for our consideration is, is Resolution 2418, and as I indicated in my questioning to Mr. Brosman, Section B, on the fourth page of our resolution, involves the applicant's requested waivers. We will be granting all the waivers, including the last one about sidewalks, and that waiver is conditioned, is a partial waiver conditioned on the construction of the path from the Quadrangle to Parkview. Is that accurate, Mr. Walco?
That is accurate.
Okay, then that is before us, Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondik.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Thank you all. Our next consideration is Resolution 2421 of 2024. This is a grant application for requesting a statewide local share account grant, and this is for license plate readers. Entertained a motion?
Motion to adopt Resolution 2421, 2024, requesting a statewide local share account grant in the amount of $320,425 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the purchase of path plate logic, license plate reader technology, and the subsequent installation at 10 intersections within the township of Haverford, and obtaining the requested grant.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Chief, why don't you come up and subject yourself to some interrogation from me, that's ironic, and answer some questions that were raised tonight, as well as some questions I've seen on social media and my own.
I'd be happy to, Commissioner. Cannot be retained for more than one year, so it automatically purges itself in one year. Now, keep in mind, the shooting that we had in West Chester Pike in, I believe, in August, and the homicide that Lower Marion had over the weekend, license plate readers were used to make an arrest in that, not make an arrest, to issue a warrant in that Lower Marion shooting, and for us, Upper Darby, to make an arrest for the shooting we had in Haverford Township. So it is a valuable tool. So when a vehicle goes through an intersection that has these license plate readers, yes, it does read your license plate, just as you would have your license plate read in almost every other town across America. It's just you're, nothing is private anymore, as we all well know. When we carry our iPhones, everybody knows when you open your iPhone, it's, you're getting information that you didn't even ask for, because somebody's tracking you. It's just how it is in the world we live in. Sadly, we don't always agree with it, but in the technology world, these are the things we need for legitimate law enforcement investigations. Now, this cannot be used for anything else but legitimate law enforcement investigations. It's not a fishing expedition. We don't go looking for a license plate to see who went where. If we have a legitimate law enforcement question, we can go into the system, put that license plate in there that shows exactly where that car went. And many, 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 many crimes are solved because with having these. So all officers have to be trained once they are in, in, in use, and to keep in mind, we've had them on two of our police cars for seven years now, along with every other law enforcement entity in the Montgomery County, Delaware County, Philadelphia, and Bucks County. We all use license plate readers in our cars. The ones in the cars only get stored for 60 days, because it's a different system, but it's the same company that we have contracted with, we've been, all of us have been using since day one. So I have not heard of any abuses of this system, and we have checked in place that if anybody should abuse the system and go somewhere that they shouldn't, we have serious consequences for that. We take this very, very seriously.
So Chief, I certainly appreciate the intrusion into our privacy that private industry, as well as the police can do, but you know, when private industry annoys me, like with putting up ads on my phone or changing my Facebook feed depending on the last search I did on the internet, you know, they don't have arrest powers, you know? People are legitimately concerned.
Sure.
When law enforcement is involved, because the ramifications are obviously more significant. Trying objectively to find out information about this, you know, in different available fora, it would seem that this, this technology is good and effective, but it is still subject to a, you know, a fairly significant error rate, I don't know, 10%, something like that?
I can't answer the error rate, Commissioner. If you put a license plate in there, it's going to come back with the information, it'll show the same license plate. So it takes a picture of the car, of the license plate, and the make of the car, because it's the back or the front, and that comes back. So if I put a license plate in there, it's going to search the system for that same license plate. So it's only one part of our investigative tool. We're not going to make an arrest because we got a hit on a license plate. You have to go through different steps also before a warrant is obtained. No judge will issue a warrant just on the basis of a license plate hit.
So that's, tell us more about that. There are people who raised the issue tonight, people watching on television, so remind me again that it isn't as simple as you see a plate and you pull someone over, you're past the point of a crime. Investigation has to take place, the judicial official or a magistrate or somebody like that would be involved in a process like this?
Well, I'll use two, two that I know that just happened very recently, the one we had in Haverford Township in West Chester Pike. We had a license plate on, on that car, the vehicle took off, and it was stopped in Upper Darby because we had a license plate, they tracked it as it went into Upper Darby Township, and it was stopped at a marshal road, so that quickly, the car was stopped. Now, just because the car was stopped, it doesn't mean we're arresting, arresting that person to stop right there on that spot. This person, as it turns out, said I did it almost immediately, but there are further steps we have to do to even get into the car, search warrants to get in the course and follow the legal process. So anything we do, like I said, this is just one investigative tool that we have. You just can't go off haphazard and say, I got a hit on this license plate. Why am I looking for it, first of all? Was it involved in a crime? So these are the steps we have to do, constitutional law, we do it every day with every arrest that we make. We follow steps that have to be followed.
Chief, there are some concerns that this, that today it's just check plates for, you know, tracking somebody who committed a crime, and what's to stop someone from flipping a switch and this becomes basically, these become red light cameras? Or we start having a medical?
We're not allowed to have, they're completely different technology. Only a first-class city can have red, red light cameras. We're not allowed to use them in any town or borough. So it's a, it's a different process, a completely different camera. Has nothing to do with violations, speeding, or anything like that. We can't, you can't use it for that, they don't work that way. It just takes a picture, that's it. You don't know how fast the car went, how many people were in it, unless it catches the back of the car, you have to see images. So that will never be used as a red light camera, because it is a completely separate system. And my personal take on red light cameras, it's, it's, there's a time and a place for them. I don't totally agree with them. I believe that somebody should be stopped and told, this is the violation you did. I know they use the Rose of Boulevard, because the amount of fatalities they have up there, they have to have some control to try and slow cars down. We have our issues, like everybody else does, as far as speeding. You all get the calls, just as we do. We do our best to do our selective enforcement where a police officer actually stops you and tells you what are being stopped.
So they also have red light cameras around City Hall, and I can tell you from personal experience, I got a picture, I got a hundred dollar, you know, invoice and a photograph of the back of my car, and I was like, come on, that's pretty grainy. There could be a million different 20-year-old blue Saabs blowing lights in Philly, and then I flipped it over.
That was standard for his mission, Larry.
And it was close up enough to read, reelect Holmes or Commissioner.
That's why.
And a Batman sticker, so I was pretty much nailed.
You were done, right.
But there's also, you know, I, there also are now speeding camera, and, and, you know, red light cameras, speeding cameras, as I understand, issue fines based upon, usually based upon not a criminal violation, but like a parking, they run out of parking authorities.
The ones that these speeding cameras have mostly done on interstates when during construction zones, and that is a civil violation, that is not a violation of the vehicle code.
Again, not to correct you, but they're also on Wisconsin Avenue in Washington, DC. I can speak from personal experience.
You're giving everything up, Larry.
Does anybody else on this board have any other concerns that have been raised to them by any constituents, or their own concerns about the license plate readers?
I just want to make it abundantly clear to the public, I understand we're asking questions, but something like a red light camera and/or speed cameras that they have in DC or something like that would require action by the state legislature. It's not something that we could do simply by passing a resolution to purchase a camera, so just to make that clear for everybody.
Yeah, and it's not only something we can't do, it's something we don't want to do right now, I mean, there's just no call for it.
I would think, I don't, I don't think we'd be allowed to say that's how we're going to enforce state law.
Yeah.
I think that would require, but either way, we're not doing it, and.
Anybody else?
Chief, the, no, I did have questions.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The, this type of technology is already being utilized in neighboring towns such as Radnor, Upper Darby.
Radnor, Upper Darby, further up the main line, some of the police departments around the airport, the Dollar County Police Departments, as well as Philadelphia, and some of the smaller towns that are just coming up to speed with them.
I understand the use is different, but is the technology, from your understanding, is the technology any different than the cameras they're using on the turnpike now for the EZPass readers?
Basically the same thing. It's, it's same technology when they capture the license plate, but how it's stored, how it's used, what it's used for is different.
And the, as you said, the burden of proof wouldn't change in terms of getting a warrant, or the burden of proof for an arrest wouldn't change this, this, all this shows is that this car went through this intersection at X time on X date.
Right, and when, we have something happening here in Haverford Township, we'll have an officer from Radnor or Upper Darby, when they hear the radio call, they'll put that license plate in there and start giving us information, this is where this car was seen the last two or three or four or 10 minutes, so we're able to track it that way.
But then to effectuate an arrest of an individual in a car that passes an intersection, you would have to show actual probable cause.
That's correct.
Of the actual crime being committed, and not just the transportation from, you know, X spot on West Chester Pike to Y spot.
That's correct. I understand the concerns that the people have, because it's new technology, and everybody's worried about, you know, they're being tracked wherever they go, but it's a fact of life, it is happening, but we are, as police officers, not tracking people to see what they do, we're using for legitimate crime-fighting information.
I have a question. Could that information be given to other government agencies if they wanted it?
No.
Okay, so it's completely private.
Law enforcement only, so it's, it's very, very strict, like.
But what about, like, another law enforcement agency?
Well, another law enforcement agency, if they log onto the system, we, we could tell them that they ask, we'd say, yes, this is where the vehicle was, we can inform them, but they can't log onto our, into our system or the system that we use in this area without being a member of it. So you just can't access it.
But you'd be required to give it to the federal government?
If it was a legitimate request for a crime, yes, we would. We share information like that every day.
Do they have to give the same, they have to use it in the same way that we use it?
Yes. Everybody, anybody is on this system, all uses the exact same way. We're all, it is, it is state law, so it's, violation of it could be serious.
Okay.
Can be serious.
So it's a state law, so the federal government wouldn't be able to use it for a different reason?
I can't answer what the federal government does, I would hope not.
Yeah, me too. Just to follow, just to put it out there also, as far as it's, this information's being able to be resold to the private sector, that is strictly broken, but it also, correct?
No, no, it is not resold. Like I said, it's automatically purged, it's, there's no, in, in the contract we have, it cannot be sold, cannot be accessed by anybody else except law enforcement for legitimate purposes.
And just to alleviate some concern with regards to any error rate, any, obviously this only sends, takes a picture and then sends a flash, an actual human officer still needs to respond and engage the vehicle, at which point I would assume they would double-check the license plate to make model or other stuff.
It goes without saying, absolutely. That's one of our steps, yes.
And I think in our conversations, you indicated one of the most common reasons why there might be an error is a, a car might have been stolen and then recovered, and then they never notified the, the agency that, that it was reported to the first time.
Yes.
So it was, it was really just the people who recovered it never made the proper notifications.
And, yes, we had that conversation, what we do see is, some of the cities, when stolen cars recovered, they forget to take it out of the system as a stolen car. So if our current license plate readers see it, it comes back as a hit, stolen car. We stopped the car, and obviously, we had to have some conversation with the operator of the vehicle, and then we called the district where it came from, it's like, oops, we forgot to take it out of the system.
But it's not misread, they're not, they're not.
No, it's not misread, it's legitimate, it just was never taken out of the system, though.
Thank you.
Somebody missed a step.
And just to say, again, we're the only township that does not have this, all the town, townships that surround us.
And it's not, we want them because they have them.
No, yeah, but this will actually help.
Yes, it'll help, it'll help everybody, ourselves and surrounding.
You won't have to rely on them anymore.
Correct.
Yeah, we're using the technology now, we're just relying on it.
Yeah, we just wanted for us to have here.
That's correct, we are.
Chief, thank you very much for clarifying that, because over the weekend, on social media and phone calls and texts, there's all kinds of people that are completely paranoid.
Yes.
To me, the fact that it solved that crime on West Chester Pike is all I need to hear.
It was a matter of.
Minutes.
Seven minutes, it was over.
And they saw that they got the guy from, from, from over there, or they know who it is.
Lower Marion, yes, that's how they.
And that's how they got him, so.
That's correct.
Any other questions, Mr. Chief?
Thank you, Commissioner.
I have a quick question, I'm sorry, Chief.
Welcome back.
Yes, I know. That these detectors will be installed at 10 intersections, are these items that are kind of installed permanently, or will they be moving around the township?
They're permanent, permanent fixed, they're permanent fixed objects. So if you drive down West Chester Pike and hit Township Line, you're going to, they're on the, on the poles down there, because Upper Darby has them there, and at Lansdowne Avenue also. So there are two right at the border of our township, but they're fixed cameras on the pole, they do not get moved.
And I guess it's not required by law that they be, like, marked, like?
Well, there's really nothing to mark, it's just, if it's a red light camera, you have to have a sign that says that, but for these, no, you do not have that marked.
Okay.
There's nothing in the statute that says you have to do that.
Okay.
Okay?
Any other questions, the chief? Thank you, Chief. Any other? Any other questions or comments from the colleagues? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondik.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
No.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
No.
Commissioner Quinn.
Absolutely, yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next consideration, Resolution Number 2422 of 2024.
A motion to adopt Resolution 2422 of 2024 requesting state local share account grant in the amount of $144,238.10 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the purchase of two Chevy Tahoe vehicles and accompanying police radio, vehicle equipment, and emergency lighting to be used for law enforcement within the township of Haverford and obtaining the requested grant.
Second. We have a motion in a second.
I think, are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondik.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
And Commissioner Holmes stepped away.
Thank you. Anybody be willing to read the next resolution?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 2423, 2024, authorizing an allocation of $26,900 from the Township's American Rescue Plan Foundation for the continued stream bank restoration along the Darby Creek Trail in the vicinity of Jack McDonald Field, including clearing invasive weeds and dead vegetation, control of herbaceous and woody regrowth, and the spreading of native seed mix throughout the area.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondik.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Resolution, our next for our consideration is Resolution 2424 of 2024 regarding our final obligations under ARPA.
Mr. President.
Yes.
To adopt Resolution 2424-2024, obligating any remaining unobligated and unpaid funds as of December 31, 2024, for the renovation project at the Haverford Township Free Library for which construction contracts were originally awarded on October 30, 2023, and purchasing contracts for furniture and audiovisual equipment were originally awarded on November 12, 2024 at public meetings of the Board of Commissioners.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on Resolution 2424? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondik.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next resolution for our consideration is 2425 of 2024, ARPA, ARPA Resolution for Parks and Recreation Projects.
Mr. President, motion to adopt Resolution Number 2425, 2024, authorizing the following allocations from the Township's American Rescue Plan Fund. $25,000 to be allocated for 40 trees at Brookline Park. $9,922 to be allocated for fencing at Brookline Park. $18,963 to be allocated for preschool playground equipment at Brookline Park. $10,472 to be allocated for the replacement climbing structures at various parks. $44,911 to be allocated for replacement composite preschool play equipment at various parks, and $20,972 to be allocated for one replacement mighty descent slide.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Other than for $21,000, that better be some mighty descent on that slide.
I would like, I'd actually like a description of a mighty descent slide, given that name and the cost. I agree with President Holmes.
I would like to be the first one down it.
You actually have an opportunity. There is a mighty descent at Murray Place right now. This, this, the slide is like eight and a half feet wide, so mom, dad, kid can get on the slide together.
I have been on
Makes it a mighty descent.
It is a mighty descent.
Beautiful slide, people love it in Murray
And everybody can get hurt at once. Awesome. Yeah.
The words you want to hear on the plane, but that's
All right, so excellent. Thank you for that clarification. And any other questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondik.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next resolution for our consideration, 2426 of 2024. This is also ARPA funds, Comprehensive Plan Implementation.
Sir President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2426, 2024, authorizing an amount not to exceed $225,000 from the Township's American Rescue Plan Fund allocation to engage a consultant to implement the Township's soon-to-be-completed comprehensive plan through a rewrite of the Haverford Township zoning ordinance, including a review of previous planning initiatives, diagnosis of the current zoning ordinance, evaluation of existing neighborhoods, corridors, zoning districts and overlays, administering public outreach meetings and workshops, documentation and adoption.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on this?
I would just clarify for anyone watching at home that this is not the approval of the comprehensive plan, that this is simply the allocation of funds to an outside vendor to rewrite our zoning code in accordance with the comprehensive plan once that is actually approved. And I'm sure that before approval, it will be released to the public and everyone will have their fair chance at commenting and providing feedback.
Thank you for that clarification, valuable clarification. Mr. Gondik, any other questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondik.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next resolution for our consideration, 2427 of 2024, is a statewide local share account grant application for a Manoa Fire Company pickup truck.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2427 of 2024, requesting a statewide local share account grant in the amount of $70,366.06 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the purchase of one pickup truck for the Manoa Fire Company and obtaining the requested grant.
Second. Second.
Second.
So we have a motion and a number of seconds. Any, any questions or comments on this? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondik.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Our next resolution for our consideration is 2428 of 2024. This is also a statewide local share account grant for, an application for the Cops Creek Stream Bank Restoration.
Mr. President, motion to adopt Resolution Number 2428, 2024, requesting a statewide local share account grant in the amount of $994,500 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority for the stabilization of approximately 1,000 linear feet of severely eroded stream bank along sections of Cops Creek in Haverford Township in obtaining the requested grant.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on this?
Where exactly are the, is the 1,000 linear feet of Serode severely eroded stream bank? Where is it?
It's in the vicinity of Caricon Drive along the stretch, you know, that has the creek there. So
Okay.
That's, that's the Cops Creek area, yeah.
Okay, great. Just want to make sure. Thanks.
Like at the start of the swim club and then
In the vicinity, yes.
Okay. From the train station to Manoa. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondik.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Excuse me. Resolution Number 2429 of 2024, this would be a local share account grant application for ADA improvements at Manoa and Woodland. At Manoa Road and Woodland Drive.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2429, 2024, requesting a statewide local share account grant in the amount of $244,530 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority for the installation of a pedestrian-activated rectangular rapid-flashing beacon, RRFB, at Manoa Road and Woodland Drive. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to express my support for anything that would make the crossing at Manoa and Woodland Drive safer, especially given that there is no access to the Penzi Trail on the eastern side of Woodland. This is a really important step to make sure that people can cross that, the very busy Manoa Road safely and then, you know, get onto Penzi Trail if they want, or go get something from the Wawa when it's lunchtime. But it is a really dangerous street for pedestrians. So I'm very glad we're applying for this grant.
And I'm glad too. I've had talks with you over the years about, about this, and I'm happy that this is about to be done, so I hope.
Hope we get this grant.
Excellent. So any other questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondik.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next for our consideration is Resolution 2430 of 2024. This is establishing our 2025 public meeting schedule.
Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner Trombetta.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2430-2024, establishing and announcing public meetings of the Township of Haverford for calendar year 2025.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on this? I trust we've taken into account, Commissioner Berman, any significant holidays and/or holy days?
That's correct.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Gondik.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Finally, Resolution 2431 of 2024. This is the use of ARPA funds for traffic signal updates at Darby and Manoa Roads.
Mr. President, motion to adopt Resolution Number 2431-2024, authorizing an amount not to exceed $17,600 from the Township's American Rescue Plan Fund allocation for ADA traffic signal upgrades, audible pedestrian signals at Darby and Manoa Road.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on this? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondik.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next items on our agenda are stipulations and agreements. We have several of them, one, two, three, seven, three tax assessments, sorry, six tax assessment stipulations and one business tax settlement. The first one for our consideration is, should we do this all in one motion?
We've done it all in one motion.
There'll be one motion. I will entertain a motion for all five property locations and for the business tax settlement.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following settlements and stipulations of counsel in the matter of owner-initiated property tax assessment appeals. in the matter of owner-initiated property tax assessment appeals. For property located at 17 Woodcroft Road, DC Folio number 2204007900, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, number 202009104, and authorize counsel and proper officers of the board to execute necessary documents. For property located at 217 East Benedict Avenue, DC Folio number 22030019400, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, number 2024006212, and authorize counsel and proper officers of the board to execute necessary documents. For property located at 29... Oh, I see where you made this change on the, on the agenda. Is it okay if I'm reading it this way? Okay.
So if you just want to indicate that for every one of these, our motion includes authorizing counsel and proper officers of the board to execute necessary documents, then you won't need to repeat that for any of the rest of the properties.
Right. I just missed it when I first read it. Okay, so I'm gonna just, to approve these settlements and stipulations of council in the matter of owner-initiated property tax assessment appeals and to authorize counsel and proper officers of the board to execute the necessary documents for each one. So I did Woodcroft Benedict.
You're up to 29 Woodcroft.
For property located at 29 Woodcroft Road, DC Folio number 22040072200, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, number 2020008496. For property located at 62 Woodcroft Road, DC Folio number 2204007500, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, number 2020008499. For property located at 3,000 Robin Lane, DC Folio number 22040064400, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, number 2020008495. And then business tax settlement, make a motion to... Do I do that?
Let's, let's stop at Robin Lane and we'll do a second motion for that.
Second.
All right, so it's clear for everybody in the board. We have a motion to consider settlements and stipulations of council in five properties: 17 Woodcroft Road, 217 East Benedict Avenue, 29 Woodcroft Road, 62 Woodcroft Road, and 3,000 Robin Lane. Any questions or comments on these? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Commissioner Cavender?
Business tax settlement. I'd like to make a motion to approve a business privilege and mercantile tax settlement agreement in the amount of $58,313.29.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. We now move to contract awards. First contract awards are for payroll and employee benefits. I will consider the first motion.
Make a motion to authorize a modification to the professional services agreement with Paychex, upgrading from the Paychex Flex system to the Paychex Flex Enterprise system for the township's payroll, time, and attendance function.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Make a motion to authorize a medical independent care flexible spending account, FSA Plan through Benefit Resource LLC.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Now we have three contracts for the library.
Mr. President?
Mr. Forstie Grupp?
Motion to approve a change order in the credit amount of $17,204.22 with Rycon, the general contractor for the Haverford Township Free Library renovation and expansion project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we did hear from our friend.
Mr. Matthews.
Mr. Matthews last week about these issues. Any, any questions or comments here?
Thing, thing, it's always great when you see a credit on something, so I think, well, I think I know how this vote's going.
Don't be so sure. Okay, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn? Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Mr. Forstie Grupp?
A motion to approve a change order in the amount of $17,204.22 with Dolan Mechanical, the HVAC contractor, for the Haverford Township Free Library renovation and expansion project.
Second.
I think this proves the Lord giveth and the Lord taketh away. Any other stupid questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Finally.
A motion to award a purchase order to COFCO in the amount of $408,038.45 for the loose furniture package at the Haverford Township Free Library renovation and expansion project under CoStarz contract number 035-E23-198.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for loose furniture. Anything, anybody else would like to add or ask?
Just that this is not additional spending, additional money. It was already within the amount that we allocated for the library renovation and expansion project, so it's not like it's an addition. It's just that we're buying this furniture at this point in the project, but it was always part of the original $21 million or so for, for the project, which is on budget and on schedule, by the way.
Second.
Here, here. We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. We now have, for our consideration, eight separate contracts in the Parks and Recreation area.
Mr. President, motion to award a contract to NGU Sports Lighting in the amount of $12,000 for additional lighting at McDonald Field under Sourcewell contract number 041123-CPL.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner...
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Commissioner McCollum, did I miss?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta? Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
A motion to award a contract to Archie Wild in the amount of $25,000 to furnish and plant 41, 1 and 1/2 to 2-inch caliber trees and related work at Brookline Park under CoStarz contract number 029-E23-117.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Abstain.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Motion to award a purchase order to Recreation Resource USA in the amount of $18,963 for preschool playground equipment at Brookline Park under CoStarz contract number 014-E22-249.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Next motion?
Motion to award a contract to Miller Sports Construction in the amount of $49,922 to furnish and install fencing at Brookline Park under CoStarz contract number 008-E22-184.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
A motion to award a purchase order to Recreation Resource USA in the amount of $44,911 for replacement composite preschool play equipment at various parks under CoStarz contract number 014-E22-249.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Motion to award a purchase order to Recreation Resource USA in the amount of $10,472 for replacement climbing structure under CoStarz contract number 014-E22-E249.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Motion to award a purchase order to George Eli Associates in the amount of $20,972 for replacement freestanding mighty descent slide under CoStarz contract E14-E23-229.
Second.
I trust to the extent that we are going to publish this agenda that we will fix the typo from might to mighty. Thanks. But it was read correctly. Thank you, Commissioner Hart.
That's not, not, not a thing you want to hear on a plane.
Yeah, might dissent, might not. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Motion to award a contract to Archie Wild in the amount of $26,900 for the continued stream bank restoration along Darby Creek Trail in the vicinity of Jack McDonald Field, including clearing invasive weeds and dead vegetation, control of herbaceous and woody regrowth, and the spreading of native seed mix throughout the area under CoStarz contract number 029-E23-117.
Second.
Before we move on this, Commissioner Hart, will you be abstaining on this vote?
I'm abstaining.
Why does he have to say?
Well, he just, he abstained the last time it was Archie Wild. I just wasn't sure why you abstained last time.
I'm abstaining because I have a family member who works for Archie Wild.
Okay, so what I was gonna just ask is if, since you're going to abstain from this, I think maybe it might be better for another commissioner just to present this particular motion. If, just, just, because you're abstaining, then you're not at all involved in the deliberation at all, including even the presentation of it. That... Agree with that, Mr. President?
I agree that would be probably the best course in the situation.
Okay.
Mr. President, like to make a motion to award a contract to Archie Wild in the amount of $26,900 for continued stream bank restoration along the Darby Creek Trail in the vicinity of Jack McDonald Field, including clearing invasive weeds and dead vegetation, control of herbaceous and woody regrowth, and the spreading of native seed mix throughout the area under CoStarz contract number 029-E23-117.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Abstain.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Okay, we're now, we move to public works. Motion to award a contract in the amount of $17,660 to ADA traffic signal update, for ADA traffic signal upgrades, audible pedestrian signals at Darby and Manoa Road?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments about this? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Mr. Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Next thing we need to do is table consideration of the emergency sewer repair contract. Is that under consideration?
This is a multi-year contract that we advertised and has gone to bid, and we received bid results, but we haven't committed, completed all the administrative functions that are necessary to make a recommendation on the bid, on the, on the contract award.
Do, oh, was this, so this was something we discussed last week in our work session, but now need to take off the agenda. Is that what you're saying? Take off the thing?
We're asking you to table it. That's correct.
Okay, so I think someone needs to move it and then table it?
I'll move to table consideration of the emergency sewer repair contract. Second.
Okay, we have a motion to table in a second. All in favor of tabling?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Finally, a contract in community development.
Motion to award a professional services contract to FHI Studio Now IMEG in the amount of $200,000 for comprehensive zoning ordinance review and rewrite.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. We now return to Citizens Forum. It's a continuation of the forum for non-agenda items. I will start here on the left. Is there anybody else? Yes. Michelle Alvarez.
Michelle Alvarez, Hastings Avenue. And I just want to thank you all for approving all the many expenditures for Parks and Recreation, in particular to all those for the Brookline Park. Very excited that we're going to really be making progress next year on the Brookline Park once we get our stormwater infrastructure in, and that by this time next year, maybe we'll be actually playing in the playground and walking in the park and so forth. So, thank you very much. I'm very much looking forward to the next year.
Thank you. Second row, Mr. Zoo. Actually, would you like to go, you go ahead, Mr. Zoo. Mr. Zoo, I got some, oh, okay.
I heard so.
Thank you.
Hi, Mac Wagner.
Yes.
Wood Lane.
Welcome back.
I just have a couple of questions. These are agenda items. Can I ask questions about agenda items?
You can ask questions about anything you'd like, and we'll do our best to answer them.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'd like to-
Or avoid answering them, but go ahead.
I'd like to know where the 10 cameras are going to be. I'm imagining that there's front and back, going both ways. So that's five different locations. I'm not sure if that's accurate. And I wondered how much ARPA money is left, since that's one of the things that we talked about. And then the buzzword came up, and I question ordinance number P172024 with the non-conforming uses, buildings and structures. So it seems to me that what's been talked about in the past was township properties that could have different zoning regulations for non-conforming buildings and structures, meaning that you could do whatever you wanted if it was township property next to a homeowner, that they wouldn't be subject to the same setbacks or anything like that. So that's my question, is that this non-conforming thing just-
Has nothing to do with the township. I mean, setting aside the township from anybody else. These are just changes to our, our current zoning ordinances that apply to everybody.
Okay. I get tasked on that.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, we may, at another time, be considering whether or not the township is subject to zoning ordinances, but that is not the subject of these changes.
Okay.
That I can assure you of.
Thank you.
Yes, certainly. But while you're asking, the ARPA money all needed to be accounted for and committed to projects by the end of 2024. So as of the end of tonight's meeting, all of the ARPA money has been, has been earmarked, to use a great governmental word, for specific projects, and commitments have been made to various contractors, organizations, whatever is necessary to satisfy the federal requirements of establishing that some kind of commitment was made, as opposed to, oh, we'll just keep another million and we'll think of something next year. So it has all been fully committed.
We're down to zero that's been allocated. We still, we're still gonna, there will be votes in 2025 when you actually spend the money, because all money spent has to be voted on by the Board of Commissioners, but all the money has been allocated as of today. That's why, you know, the last couple of meetings have all the agenda. So again, it just goes back to what I tried to express when discussing the budget. We did take this very seriously, and we made sure that we allocated all those funds that we were made available by the federal government, and they went to as many projects as we could. And that's why some of the, the increase to, the funding towards the Skadion project, for instance, came out of the ARPA money, because it was to make sure we allocated all that money by the end of this calendar year.
And actually, I'll, I'll get more questions from the audience, and then I'll ask the chief to describe where the cameras are going. Mr. Zoo, I know you're anxious to speak. And, and Mr. Zoo, if I may, I got some information before, while, between the time that you spoke and I spoke and now.
Okay.
So very specifically, out of a total borrowing by the township of about 20.6 million, several million of which was taxable money because of the projects that it was being used for, approximately 13, exactly 13 million of that borrowing was, was set aside for the library. So the amount of borrowing for the library is 13 million. The rest of the money associated with the library came from several million dollars of state and federal grants, and also several million dollars of ARPA funds, and then other assorted grants and, and cash that became available to add up to what the total cost of the library is. The annual debt service associated with that borrowing is approximately 1.4 million. 63% of that is, represents the library, so it's about 880,000 a year is the debt service. That would be interest and principal, directed to the library. It's possible that number is actually a little high, only because the, the debt service doesn't amount exactly to 63%, because all of the library funding was tax-exempt bonds, but some portion of the funding of the 20.6 million included taxable bonds. So the proportion is probably not 63% on the debt service. It's 63% on the principal, but it may actually be a little less on the interest.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Certainly.
And any more update? Can I ask?
Yes, now the floor is yours. I just wanted, to the extent that I had given you some bad information, that was off the top of my head, but since then I got good information.
I'm fine, because I mean, I don't, you actually, I'm amazed that you remember all this stuff on the agenda. I get my head spinning. Anyway, appreciate it. Though, I can see it first time. First time I came to this meeting, I saw your effort you put in. Okay. I hate long meetings myself, because I'm not just going through, you're going through this, so I appreciate it. So one thing is actually, what I actually, what I'm trying to find out, actually how we, me, to get involved with a budgeting process every year. We had an exchange with our commissioner. She was very digitally forward information and going through. And I went through last year's, and the slides, and the proposed. It's hard for me to go and sort of, because if you come Excel, I mean, I can manipulate, I can compare, I can do PDF and/or, or PPT. It's very hard, actually, for anyone to try to make a sense of the budget. So one thing, and as one, actually, the budget, actually, if for facilitate, facilitate the conversation before finalizing the budget, and I think maybe if I have better format, and upload to the township website in Excel form, and this way we can actually, some of, we have some background on budgeting, so we can actually do a comparison and a digging, right? This is very important. I'm not saying that the budget was not honest. What I'm saying is very hard for me to verify. Yeah, you see what I mean?
Sure. I understand your point. An easily, a more, a more searchable, you know, database or program for purposes of evaluating the preliminary budget, even year to year, would be helpful to you.
Actually, we, we are doing better than county. The county, actually, they, they proposed, the proposed budget is worse. I mean, they got actually 200 some slides, and all the little funds, you go in there, they don't actually connect the dots. You can't add the things up. If you're interested, read it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna-
We take pride in being much better than county.
Right. So actually, I think we're doing better, but actually, I like to figure, another thing is actually to figure out, actually, I always argue that this year, because there is a commission, my wife on another list, getting notice in the meeting, I mean, basically because our fault, we're not really kinda there. But actually, so I'd like to have a mechanism, so we can be, got early alert, so can participate, to put our input on the budgeting process. I heard from Public Works, there is county alert or some system, if anything there, it will be actually get notified. And if something like a budget for me is important, so I like to be alert. I say that what's done during this process, this is a meeting, pay attention. I, I'm now retired from salary work. I have many things to do, but actually I'm willing to spend more time with the township. This is a great township. I want to emphasize this. We live here for 32 years. We want to live here for the rest of our life. Okay?
Well, welcome to it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Zoo.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yes, I appreciate. Thank you for your enthusiastic, you know, willingness to help.
Oh, I apologize. In the beginning, the first time I've been in a meeting, I didn't know the format, so I kept interrupting you.
You have learned quickly. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Audi, yes.
I could just add, I mean, the budget, we, we did vote on the dates for next year, so the, the budget meeting for next year, sir, is November 17, 2025, and then December 8, 2025.
And, again, I was going to add to that. In July, we, we propose and then adopt a schedule for the entire budget adoption process, starting with when the township manager starts gathering his information, when he presents budgets to us, the commissioners, which we see before the first meeting. And that will also be helpful to you in terms of focusing your attention. We're not going to pay attention to budget stuff in, in, in April, but on Halloween, we get a copy of the budget, and in those three weeks before the budget hearing is when, is when it's in front of us and, and when input is most valuable. Can that be shareable at that stage? I, I will, I will find that out. Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Audi. Welcome back.
Sorry, Audi, Haverford Township. Thank you, Commissioner Holmes, for allowing the chief to come up and, you know, discuss the questions that you posed, that we posed, kind of, so we should appreciate that.
Most welcome.
I did have a question and also an observation. So the question is on the Resolution 2428 on the statewide for the erosion on the 1,000, I don't know what else.
Linear feet.
Linear feet, thank you. So, you know, I just, I guess I missed out on what happened. I live on Rosewood Lane, which comes right down to Winfield Drive, and in August of 2020, the horrible flooding. I, I just never really caught up with what ended up happening, so it's, I may have missed if there was any solution for those individuals that reside on that side of the, the twins that are down on Winfield Drive. So.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, don't let me interrupt you.
Oh, well, that was just the question, and then the observe, another, just an observation. I guess it was, I don't know, maybe it was the end of 2023, the website, maybe this is posed to you, Mr. Berman, that, that meeting minutes for anything prior to 2022 are not on the website anymore. I'm just curious to know if that's going to be coming back up from any of the committees or any of the Board of Commissioners and everything. It's just, it's just-
Yeah, we were working on an ADA accessibility.
Right, yeah.
And I think IT still, obviously, IT still has them, and we have all the hard copies. If you wanted them, specific ones, I could get them for you, but in the meantime, that's the best we could do. But yeah, in IT, they're working on that.
It'll be available to the public eventually? Or just, okay, perfect.
They're available now. If you want them, you tell me what you need.
Okay, well, I mean, it's just, it's easier if it's just right there, you know, on the website.
Yep, they're working on that.
Okay, great, okay, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, Jerry, you best equipped to talk about the Cobb's Creek work, or any one of us here? Oh, actually, Chuck.
I'll jump in on this one. So the, the Cobb's Creek work is generally from more or less the, the Swim Club down to more or less Minowa Road. It's an area that, there's natural stream banks there, okay, as opposed to Winfield Drive, where there's hard, hardened stream banks, and concrete and retaining walls and such. This area is part of the township's what's called PRP, Pollution Reduction Plan, and there's a requirement by the state that you reduce so many, a certain percentage of the sediment in the streams and everything. That's why it's being done in this particular area. So the idea is to go in there and take some of those areas that are eroded and try to naturally restore those areas with plannings, with different types of, different types of apparatus that kind of divert the water away from the stream banks, so it erodes less and everything. So that's the whole idea of that.
No, sure, go ahead, okay. Oh, so the question, what happened with Winfield?
With Winfield, yeah, thank you for that.
So that, that work will help Winfield in that part of it, is that it backs up to Winfield?
That's what happens.
Winfield is also, sorry? Oh, yeah. So, so a number of things have been done with Winfield. We've studied different, different, different alternatives, including, you know, whether or not we would flood Merwood Park more or reduce it. And I know there's an effort to clean out the septic side of those tracks. We, we went through that analysis. As you know, we also, years ago, fixed the driveway back there and, and reestablished the, the wall. We've not flooded since the summer of 2020, and the capacity right now seems to be at its best, but Winfield Drive is, is long-term, is long-term issue. It's, there's many square miles of watershed that all finds its way at the bottom of Rosewood and, and Winfield Drive, and we've gotten, the work downstream will help, and that's, it's not dedicated to it, but it's a byproduct of it.
Thank you.
Chief, it's not a state secret where we're putting the 10 cameras, is it?
We haven't made final decisions on what intersections, but they will be on the major intersections.
Right. I assume this is basically getaway routes and places where cars can travel quickly.
Make that final decision, funding's approved, we'll make-
Other than to catch me speeding on Chestnut Avenue, Chestnut and Roland is not likely to be one of your camera.
Putting there.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Did that cover all the questions from the crowd? Okay, excellent. Oh, sorry, was there any, no, no, no.
The chief's, except for the list.
Will it be published where, where they're going?
Yes, once we make that final decision next year, it'll, it'll be published where they are.
Mr. Diskin, did you want to speak?
There was a question about that.
Um, I-
I don't want to go out of turn if anybody else.
You're not out of turn. It's your turn, I think. Yes. You may, please. You were on my list earlier.
I, I was.
Yeah.
And I wasn't here with apologies, but I read over the weekend that CNH Planning wasn't going to be here, so that topic was postponed.
Yes.
So at that point, I kind of erased it up here, and I didn't withdraw my name.
We did announce that we will be, we will be, we have not yet decided whether or not CH Planning is going to come back to a regularly scheduled township meeting, or whether we're going to hold a special one, just dedicated to that topic.
Got you.
We will make that decision in plenty of time, you know, and not just the night before.
Okay.
But in the meanwhile, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And I was late tonight because I had some unforeseen babysitting duty that popped up in the family. So, anyway, well, it's nice to see everybody again, and thank you for your feedback today. That's what reminded me of the meeting tonight, because once I saw that it was canceled, I kind of switched my brain off, and then I said, oh jeez, maybe I better run over there. So this is becoming more conversational for me now. And I do have to admit, when I first started on this issue of my concerns about Colfax Road, you know, some 17, 18 months ago, you know, I kind of came in like thinking that this was the right route to go, and maybe there was going to be some resistance, maybe there wasn't, et cetera. And the more I have come to these meetings, and the more I've gone on the township websites, the more I realize what a, what a novice I am, what a toddler I am in the world of, you know, running a township. The complexity and the breadth, and sometimes the frank tediousness of the level of which you guys have to get down to run this township amazes me, and I do now have a much greater appreciation for what you do. Okay, so let me preface my remarks by saying that.
Well, on behalf of my colleagues, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm not, I'm not here, as I've said before, to argue. I'm here to try to work together, and if bringing my little block or my few square block area into this meeting all the time isn't the right venue, so to speak, I can take it to Commissioner McCluskey, Trombetta, order a smaller forum. And I don't need to tie up everybody's time with this month after month, but until I hear differently, here I am again, okay? And Chief Iola, with apologies, I actually hit send unintentionally to an email that went to Commissioner McCluskey, Trombetta, Manager Berman, and Sergeant Long. I think I hit that last night. I was just simply intending to send it to my friend, neighbor, and kind of co, co-partner in this project, Mr. Taylor from the first block of, unit block of Colfax. And Sergeant Long actually suggested, if, if, if you would like, I'd be happy to send the emails directly to you. I just kind of, in, in my career, I always started with a department head, assuming that it would get bounced up. He thought you might want to be the person for me to send them to.
He, he's in charge of all traffic, so I think, he'll always come to me when things have to be done.
Okay, so I didn't mean any disrespect.
I got enough emails, thank you.
I, I, that's what I figured, and that's the way I was operating. Okay. So having prefaced it with that, the email that I did prematurely send was the final draft, so thank God for that. And it's going to take three minutes and about 25 or fif, half, 30 seconds to read, if, if, if that's-
Well, after that 19-minute introduction, go ahead.
Well, I'm, I, you know, there were a few things I wanted to clear up.
You did. Part of it was an 18-minute compliment, so I appreciate it. Go for it.
And the other thing is, I'm going to take the liberty of borrowing from Mr. Taylor's minutes earlier, because he had also signed up tonight. So, having said all that, I don't want to make it a 20-minute introduction, so I'll just simply read what I had written, and I apologize to the visual learners that I don't have copies for everybody tonight. "In the fall of 2022, Haverford's Planning Commission issued a revised draft of the township's comprehensive plan for the conservation and development of the township. In it, it states, 'One of the major goals of the plan is, quote, 'to protect the livability of residential neighborhoods, including to protect the character of older residential areas, to protect homes from nuisances and hazards, to avoid commercial intrusion into residential areas, and to provide safe streets and pedestrian crossings near homes.' So I am speaking tonight because I believe and continue to believe that the township can do better for the homeowners in the Paddock Park slash Oakmont Estates neighborhood. As an aside, I will say that I think one or two of the things that have had a major impact there, obviously, are the YMCA, which has brought hundreds and hundreds of vehicles on a daily basis to the township, many of which, I believe, cut through this neighborhood I'm referring to. And also, we've heard about pickleball at Paddle Park, at Paddock Park, rather, and I'm sure a lot of folks are coming through to get to the pickleball tournaments or whatever's going on down there. So, having said that, I live on the unit block of Colfax and continue to have concerns about traffic safety there. Additionally, my concerns extend to the entire grid of streets, which run from Colfax to Ellis and from Darby to Gulf Hills. I believe several traffic-related issues have adversely affected this neighborhood, and I had hoped that the Safe Streets Initiative would have yielded more thoughtful recommendations than what I have read. I am not well-versed on the complexities of working with PennDOT, the state, and the county, but I do hope that some root causes for our circumstances can be addressed. For instance, experience suggests, and this is to put it mildly, the Eagle and Darby Road intersection is not up to handling the traffic demands of the moment. So I have to ask, is the empty lot next to Nudie's and across from Katz Pharmacy still for sale? There's a sign there. And if it is, has the township made an offer to buy it so the intersection could be re-engineered to open up that intersection? That would take a lot of heat off Eagle and Darby Roads going in every direction. Secondly, another concern I have is for Colfax itself. At last month's commissioners' meeting, I voiced ambivalence about Colfax Road being identified as, quote, "a neighborhood gateway." I'm no longer ambivalent. I'd rather not be living on a neighborhood gateway, and I'll tell you my thoughts. I think simply labeling, or rather, it's been identified as a neighborhood gateway. I think simply labeling it as such is just attaching a term to the status quo when a closer look is in order. I went to the focus groups. I told them about my concerns about the unit block of Colfax and where a lot of the traffic was coming from. and where a lot of the traffic was coming from. And I feel they just kind of heard that and said, oh, this must be a gateway street. Let's look at why it's become a gateway street, okay? The intersection, which can handle the current traffic at Eagle and Darby, I believe, and other causes. So specifically, let me point out, every weekday between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m., both East and West Hillcrest Roads have turned restrictions in place. My observations have shown that these restrictions are simply funneling much of the redirected traffic onto Colfax. So with apologies to those living on Hillcrest, let's take a look at the facts. Number one, West and East Hillcrest are the only streets between Eagle and Ellis Road that have such restrictions. Two, West Hillcrest is a full five feet wider than the unit block of Colfax. That's 20% wider. Two, three, rather, West Hillcrest is very straight and has excellent sightlines, whereas the unit block of Colfax, as I've said repeatedly, has a sweeping curve and very poor sightlines. And four, West Hillcrest is zoned as R6, which is for kind of more commercial zoning. It's, you know, got apartments above units there. It's got a lot of twins, businesses are spilling out onto the alley. Colfax is R4. We're a different zoning. We should have, you know, a different level of, you know, I guess, buffer, frankly, from Eagle Road. That's why I bought on Colfax. Living on a gateway street for my most immediate neighbors is one thing. However, living on a cut-through street is another. And right now, the unit block of Colfax feels much more like the latter than the former. My position is this. The intersection at Eagle and Darby Roads needs to be re-engineered, and East and West Hillcrest Roads need to be reopened to allow, at least for the free flow of traffic. Others will certainly have different and perhaps better ideas. In the interest of inclusion and fairness and safety, I'm asking that we have a breakout meeting to discuss these issues at the third and fourth ward level. Let's take this opportunity to work together to make this neighborhood the best that it can be. Okay? You guys know where I am. A lot of you have my email, you know, and my phone number. Ellis Road, God bless them. I don't know what their solution's going to be because everybody coming from Ardmore Avenue to Eagle Road on Darby Road. Ellis Road is the road they dump down and coming out of the Y, they go right across Woodley, and they go up Ellis. Okay, so they've got a bigger problem, frankly, than Colfax has. But I'm here for Colfax. So that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Diskin. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Okay, this concludes our, the second half of the citizens' forum. I think, Chief, did you say that when we do come to the decision of where the cameras will be, that will be public information?
That's correct.
Okay. Plus, it's pretty obvious, right? These are big, huge cameras.
Say it again, please.
It's pretty obvious, right? When these go up?
We'll talk more about it, yes.
Yeah, okay.
It will be public information on that.
Thanks, Chief. Okay. Next on our agenda, does any commissioner have any new business they want to bring before this board right now? Hearing none. It is time for other business. We'll start with Mr. Gondik. Mr. Gondik.
I'll keep this very short and sweet. I just want to wish everyone happy holidays in the coming weeks and a happy new year. Please enjoy yourself in a responsible and safe manner. And just, again, I wish everyone happy holidays. The only other thing I would say is if you're buying gifts for children, please don't get them those electric scooters. Want them, they're just too dangerous. Please, please get a different gift. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gondik, for that public service announcement. Commissioner Forstie-Grepp.
I would just like to, again, congratulate the Haverford boy, Haverford Middle School Football Team for their undefeated season. And it was just wonderful to begin our meeting with such excitement and enthusiasm and for us to have cheers for the Ford. So that's just a really happy community moment. I also want to wish everyone happy holidays. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Forstie-Grepp. Commissioner McCloskey.
Yeah, I also just want to wish everyone happy holidays. Thanks, reiterate my appreciation for Mr. Berman and Ms. Cuthbertson and everybody who had a hand in the budget in getting that done. It is a large undertaking. And then, you know, just, I wanted to thank you, Mr. Holmes, for your leadership over the last year as president of the board. And I know at times we joke about the brevity with which you speak or address people's questions. But I know, in all sincerity, well, you do that because you care and because you think it's important and because you want to make sure that the public has all the information on what we're voting on. So certainly appreciate your leadership in that regard.
Thank you for that.
During your time as president.
Thank you, Commissioner McCloskey.
That's all I have.
Mr. Kavater.
Thank you. I'll just echo thanks to Amy and her team and Dave for their hard work on the budget. And especially for, I really appreciate the conservative way that you project forward because, as it turns out, this year we were able to go from an initial budget of almost 4% down to 3.5%. And so thanks for all your hard work and thank my colleagues for passing this budget. And just happy holidays to everyone. That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Kavater. Commissioner Quinn.
I'd like to say Merry Chris, or Christmas to everybody and have happy holidays. And that Santa will be coming around the seventh ward next week, next Sunday. So I'm sure everybody will be thrilled to see him. And also, one more quick, there are a few more quick things. The leaves will be collected next week in, I believe, the sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth wards. And also, I wanted to congratulate a team that's not in our town, but I'm a grad at that school, of Monsignor Connor on becoming a state state champ last week. So, and I also have to throw for my friend from the third ward over there that seemed to, because it was prep, who I'm not a big fan of. One, one, one as well, too. So congrats to them as well. And to Larry Holmes, I was, I did vote for you to be the head of our board two of the three times. So I'm sorry, but.
Well, I'm going to give you 2/3 of a Christmas card this year, so thanks for that.
Thanks, but thank you for all your service the past three.
Absolutely, thank you, Connor.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Hart.
Yeah, just wish everyone a peaceful and happy holidays.
Thank you. Commissioner McCollum.
Just to echo what Connor said, Commissioner Quinn, next week in the ninth ward, the leaves will be collected. I'd like to publicly, you know, thank Dave Mariotti and his crew. It's an enormous amount of work that they put in. He suggested I drive down the yard, as they call it, the other day to take a look at the leaf pile. Will blow your mind, the amount of leaves these guys moved this season. They're not done. And just be patient with them. They do a great job. That's all I have, happy holidays.
Thank you, Commissioner McCollum. Commissioner Trombetta.
I'm a little embarrassed that mine's long today. But this is a tradition.
It could be longer than mine, don't worry.
This is a tradition that I started my first year as board of commissioner. And so I'm on the board of commissioners. And so I'd like to continue it, which is that as the year draws to a close, I always like to pause and reflect on what we've been able to achieve together. And so I think this year was a year of growth, progress, and collaboration. Thanks in no small part to the incredible dedication of our township staff and the support of our residents. Thank you, guys, for coming tonight and sticking it out with us. A personal highlight, and I don't take credit for it, but for me, of course, was witnessing the expansion of the Pensy Trail Phase 2, a long-awaited addition that enhances the connectivity in our township. We've also made great strides on key environmental initiatives, addressing stormwater management, composting, renewable energy, and introducing new recycling opportunities. These collective efforts led to the Haverford Township being recognized as the 2024 Sustainable Organization of the Year by Delaware County. I think that's a tremendous honor that reflects our shared commitment to sustainability. As chair of the Commissioners Economic Development Committee, I greatly enjoyed working with our township staff and partners like Discover Haverford to support our local businesses. Through grant programs and new initiatives, we've helped many of our businesses succeed, even during challenging times. At the same time, I'm proud of the work that we've done, that I've done alongside the township staff to ensure that we attract and retain the best talent our region has to offer. And I really do believe that. Initiatives like the benefit program that we passed tonight demonstrate our commitment to valuing the incredible work of our township team. Of course, this year for me has not been without its challenges. And I want to assure you that I remain committed to doing everything that I can to support my neighbors in the fourth ward, including those near Paddock Park and throughout the township as we work together to create a positive community for our residents. I feel fortunate to serve alongside an exceptional board and staff who continue to rise to meet these challenges with determination and care, I think as evidenced tonight. Amid the hard work, I've also really had the joy of sharing moments with my colleagues in the community, whether it was taking a turn in the dunk tank, volunteering at events, marching in the Township Day Parade together, hosting town halls, or even singing publicly, which I can assure you will never happen again. These experiences remind me of the camaraderie we share and the privilege it is to serve in this role. So looking ahead, I'm filled with optimism for the new year. From the opening of a new library to the expansion of our trails and many other projects on the horizon, there's much to look forward to. Again, I'm deeply grateful for the opportunity to serve this incredible community. And I look forward to continuing our work together to make Haverford Township an even better place to live, work, and thrive in 2025. Did not prepare much, but I did intend to say that it has been a great pleasure serving as your left-hand person over here. I've learned from you, grown because of you, and I'm grateful for your leadership. So thank you all, and happy holidays.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Trombetta. Before people get the wrong impression, I will continue to run for this office so long as my constituents believe that my potential exceeds my performance to date. But I won't do so from the middle of the room. It has been a wonderful, wonderful experience presiding over this board for what I can't believe now is three years. For the 16 years before that, I certainly had a lot of opinions and made them known. But one opinion I had, and strictly from ignorance, was the task that it was to be president. I think only Commissioner Hart on this board now has had the experience of sitting here in the middle with the gavel. And only now do I appreciate his own work at being president and what it involves and the view you get into the township and its workings and how hard it's our staff and our leaders and all of them work to make this a better township. But another thing I've really appreciated is the folks in the township who make the effort and who care to come out to these meetings, to comment, to give us feedback, to deliver that feedback forcefully, to deliver that feedback respectfully, sometimes to deliver that feedback angrily. But as a reminder to all of us and to me that this job up here is service, service to the township. It's not, it is a privilege to do it, but it certainly isn't our right to. And it's a privilege I want to keep earning. But for three years, I earned your, I earned your trust to sit here in the middle and preside over these meetings. And that has been three very, very fun years. So I don't give up this gavel easily. But I do give it up, and I look forward for future leadership on this board. And I wish everybody a happy, healthy holiday. And I wish everybody goodwill to one another and for peace on earth. So with that, I will, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.